Good evening and welcome to the September 20, 2023 regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I'm Mayor Nathan Box and I'm calling this meeting to order. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd Vreeman.
Here.
Peters Corbin.
Here.
Sol.
Here.
Arnshorst.
Here.
Hookstra.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We have a corps.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kathy. We're going to begin this evening's meeting as we have for many years, first with an opening prayer, this week by our city manager Keith Van Beek, followed immediately by the pledge of allegiance, and we would ask you to join us if you're so inclined.
Thank you, and if you would, join me in prayer. Father God, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for this day, for this week. We thank you for the opportunity for public service, for the high calling of serving our community. We ask not only for your protection and your guidance for all of our employees as they are out and about and doing a variety of tasks in service, but we pray also for counsel this evening and deliberations that are brought before them, for clarity of thinking, for unity and purpose, and again, for your guidance. Thank you for your blessings. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Keith. Next item on our agenda are our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine. They have been reviewed by council members as part of our packet, and they'll be enacted in one motion with one vote unless a member of the public or a member of city council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before I ask for that, Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
4A, absence excused. 4B, approval of minutes, September 6, 2023 regular meeting, and September 13, 2023 joint council and Holland Board of Public Works study special session. 4C, Osev Office. 4D, Holland Board of Public Works constellation new energy, N A E S B agreement. 4E, Holland Board of Public Works water treatment plant rooftop unit. 4F, Holland Board of Public Works approved banking services agreement with Huntington National Bank. 4G, Holland Board of Public Works Calhoun Solar amended and restated letter of authorization. 4H, planning commission, 7:30 East 64th Street rezoning request, final adoption, October 4, 2023. 4I, city clerk, claims filed against the city. 4J, transportation services, traffic changes, parking change on Lincoln and Central Ave. 4K, Parks and Recreation, Moran Park Concrete Project Change Order. 4L, Finance Department Quarterly Investment Report. 4M, Management and Administrative Services Downtown Group Principal Shopping District Board Appointment.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda? Seeing none. Any member of council that would like to have an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
It would move to approve the agenda as presented.
Moved by Vreeman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Sol. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Vreeman.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Sol.
Yes.
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, we provide the opportunity for the public to come and speak to council at every one of our meetings, whether it's a regular meeting or a special meeting, and you can do that at our board committee and commission meetings as well. And we don't just do it because it's part of the Open Meetings Act. Frankly, we like to hear from members of the public, and you're invited to come up and speak for up to five minutes on any subject that you want to. It is one-way communication, which means we don't answer questions during this time, engage in discussion or debate. If you do have a specific question, staff may be able to circle back to you to answer that question at some point in the future. Please notice there are three lights on the dais in front of me. There's a red light, a yellow light, and a green light. The green light means you're doing well on time. The yellow light means you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time has expired, and we do hold to that strictly. Having said that, we'd invite you, someone who wants to address council, please approach the podium, and please state your name and municipality for the record.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Ristolabass. I'm chair of the Human Relations Commission. I live in the city of Holland. My pleasure to address you all again. I specifically wanted to communicate to the council that our focus for this year, we have decided, is going to be particularly housing issues and education issues, particularly in support of Holland Public Schools, but education at all levels and for all people, not just Holland Public. More particularly, especially since I don't think she's in the room yet, is I wanted to say how much we treasure Esther Pfefelsky as a staffer. The city has all of its elected members, its volunteers, but it's really run on the staffers, as we've seen at some other bodies lately. We know that the staff is really the heartbeat of the city, and so we wanted to let you all know that we love Esther and her heart for service and her wonderful way of managing many difficult situations and the staff that works with her. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Please come forward, and please state your name and municipality for the record.
My name is Lynn Light, 692 Myrtle Avenue, Fourth Ward. I'm here for two reasons. First, to address Mayor Box for his great emcee work for the St. Patty's Leprechaun Chase. He's done it two years in a row for us.
Mr. Light, not just because you're saying nice things about me, but I'd appreciate it if you moved closer to the microphone so that people at home have the opportunity to hear you as well. I'd ask you to do that regardless of the subject matter.
I... Oh, no, no. That's gotten me in trouble. The last couple of years, the mayor has been our emcee for the St. Patty's Leprechaun Chase. He does such a great job emceeing. We have pre-race, pre-race we chase. We have kids who are four to eight years old running a course and listening to the mayor call a race. I mean, you've heard the horse races, you know, coming around the corner and so on, but he can point out the kids, and the parents are just have a good time. The kids have, they get into it, listening to the mayor call the race. It's a draw for the St. Patty's Day race. The main race, the 5K, the way he brings the runners in from the home stretch to the finish line. Now, the last two years, we've had brutal weather. This last year, we will always remember him saying at one point, "Run to the sound of my voice." It was such a white-out condition that we were listening to the speaker. So, it's just, it's just, he's now part of the legend of the last two races, so I thank you for that. The other is, I'm going to present the mayor with a vest, if I may.
Certainly.
And the reason I'm doing this one because he's done such a good job, and two, how many times have we...
Oh, yes, thank you. Please be at the microphone.
How many times have we left our cushions on our chairs in the yard? And usually, if we leave it out, it will ensure the likelihood that it will rain that night, okay? I gave the vest to the mayor to ensure that next March we'll have 20 to 30-degree weather because we just gave him a little bit more protection for the cold, so that's why I'm here. So, thank you. You are part of the race now, and the last two years, like I said, you're part of the legend, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Henrickson-Zeland. It was my pleasure to hear the recap of four years of this council's accomplishments from the mayor's perspective. At the LWV forum Monday, the question was asked, "Would you support the anti-discrimination ordinance put in place 2020?" Mayor Box commented that Mr. Shattuck did not answer the question, so Mayor Box said he would answer it fully. He mentioned with pride all the different classes of people protected, emphasizing sexual orientation. This ordinance was to institute protection for persons in housing, employment, and accommodations. Then he mentioned it was in line with the constitutions. In 2020, the then-current Michigan Elliott Larson anti-discrimination law did not contain the terms sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. So, how did it get into the city of Holland ordinance, and how would it be legal? The council directed by Mayor Box requested the city lawyer and manager to produce an ordinance that included sexual orientation language. When the ordinance was submitted, it had the credentials of Michigan Attorney General Dana Nessel. She put sexual orientation, et cetera, into the Michigan Anti-Discrimination State Commission operations. When the commission was contacted by Holland's lawyer and manager, the Michigan Commission issued Holland's anti-discrimination ordinance recommended for municipalities. The Michigan Commission likewise uses the same sexual orientation language judging any state LGBT complaint. None of this, on the other hand, is done through, was done through Congress. Holland residents, the ones who get to live here, never had a chance to submit any suggestion to Holland's ordinance. Most people did not even know it was taking place in its ramifications, drag, burlesque, divination at Park Theater, that's this year, drag queen stories for children, nudity in Centennial Park for Pride Month, porn books in the library and schools, just to mention a few. The ordinance was passed after many hours of LGBT-plus community testimonies based on their feelings of fear to live here because it was dangerous. The majority of the people who came to the public comment portion to testify did not even live here. Did you know that the ordinance never was based on any substantial LGBT discrimination cases here in Holland? The Human Relations Commission of Holland had no evidence of lesbian, gay, transvestite, transgender, bisexual discrimination in Holland. The decision to pass the ordinance was based on people's perceived unfound fears and emotions. So, Monday at the LWV forum, when Larry Shattuck answered the question whether as mayor he would support Holland's anti-discrimination ordinance, in wisdom, he answered correctly. He said he believes all people are made in God's image. Therefore, he would support the constitutional laws that protect people's rights. Mayor Box said he is a liberal. The current Michigan government is liberal, with Governor Whitmer at the helm, and Attorney General quickly passing laws to accommodate the LGBT community. The sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression was voted by Congress into the Michigan Constitution and signed by the governor. The federal constitution does not contain sexual orientation language. May it be clear, it usurps state anti-discrimination laws. Right now, the Supreme Court of the United States is heavily weighing LGBT lawsuits with the Constitution protecting right of expression of one's faith in marriage between a man and a woman and the same in sexual engagements. The Holland ordinance and the Michigan Elliott Larson anti-discrimination law does not comply with the Constitution of the United States. So, pride in this ordinance could easily bring a lawsuit against this city. When fruit is seen about what goes on behind closed doors of the heart, it exposes truth. And by the way, did you know Governor Whitmer has abolished the sex offender registry in the state of Michigan? Why is this important? That was put in place to protect our children from sexual predators. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Martha Capistani, Holland. Good evening, council. Thank you for your service. I have remained for a time in meetings after I shared public comment. I have been impressed with the work that goes on in these meetings and the questions posed by council members regarding various issues. This is important work with long hours, and again, I want to thank you for that. Two weeks ago, I spoke about what's really going on with Drag Queen Story Hour. I spoke harshly because I feel strongly about protecting the innocence of children against confusing sexual adult themes and degrading stereotypes. I don't believe that this is good for Holland, based on my research, and how this particular event itself, in so many places, including schools, devolves into something else: pole dancing, stripping, touching, taking money. This is a harmful political ideology. Studies show that children have a natural aversion to unnatural things. It can actually act as an innate layer of protection. I'm not a child psychologist, but I am a coach, and I can read a study on child development. A child does not have the capacity to process these abstract concepts until a much later age, and even at that point, they are grappling with puberty and the natural stresses that come along with that. So, why are we creating and exposing them to these inappropriate ideologies earlier and earlier, causing confusion and a potential misunderstanding about safe boundaries? This only makes them more vulnerable to predators. Now, I'm not saying that everyone is a predator because they exist in all walks of life, but I don't think we're grasping the reality of where this is heading. There has to be a dark agenda behind it because it goes against all common sense. There are many in the gay community right now who are appalled by what Pride Month has become and do not agree with Drag Queen Story Hour. And based on what I shared about the drag pedagogy and their manifesto to indoctrinate kids into their ideology, I think we can agree that this should not be for kids, and we shouldn't be exposing them to this in a public forum or in our schools. We have to admit that there's evil in this world, and it's circling around our children. Someone's sexual proclivity should be their own business, but not their only value or worth in this world. The idea that Drag Queen Story Hour is being done under acceptance is again a Trojan horse. We now know that, we know that not all parts of various cultures are good in our moral capacity to understand them. We have condemned different cultures in other countries in the past for their treatment of women and children, yet here we are going down a slippery slope, and Drag Queen Story Hour is just one piece of that. Their motives are not often what they claim, and based on what occurred this past Pride Month, people were very upset about this coming to Holland, and they're worried about what's coming next. I think this particular event is extremely divisive to the Holland public at large and should not be supported or promoted in the city of Holland during Pride Month. I am asking again to keep age restrictions for adult events and keep adult sexually-themed books out of the hands and minds of young children. I know I speak for many in the Holland area who are afraid to speak. I don't want to be here talking about this, but I'm doing it to protect children, especially the vulnerable ones who have no one, may not have anyone to look out for them. I've been a coach for over 35 years, and I know the responsibility that goes with that. Adults in so-called positions of authority and power can have tremendous influence over their students and the children around them. Kids are taught to respect and listen to adults, but I want you for a moment, think back about your favorite teacher or coach, or even a family member or friend when you were young. They took an interest in you. You really liked this person and respected them, and you thought they were cool and you trusted them. But what if they began lying to you about something? What if after a time, they said or did something that made you uncomfortable? What would you do? Would you have gone along with it because you trusted it? Would you have been afraid to say no? Would you have been able to tell someone else, or would they tell you to keep it a secret from parents? If we as a society don't protect our children from those with bad intentions or misguided good intentions, we will be complicit. They are called children for a reason. They don't have the emotional understanding or physical strength to protect themselves from all danger or lives, or, excuse me, all danger and lives. So, I'm asking, what can you as a city council do to ensure inclusion, yet protect the city from going down the slippery slope that has consumed so many communities? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time?
If I may again for a second.
It's your only, I'm sorry, you're only allowed to speak once during a council meeting. My apologies for that. Yep.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on our agenda is item seven, Special Order of the Day, Public Hearings. We have a number of them this evening. 7A is review and approval of the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, the CAEPER, for 2022 to 2023 for the CDBG program year. Mr. Van Beek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm going to ask Mark Cornellus to come up in a second, and fast, he can transition up, sorry. Up and down, up and down, poor Mark. I was trying to think, is this third time around for you, Mark, or is it four already?
I think it's three.
Okay. We always look forward to this. Mark does a fantastic job administering this program and a lot of other things. But of course, he'll explain how we are able to take community development block grant funds, and as a responsibility of that, those are special funds that we need to go through a reporting requirement and recommendations, and we definitely have citizens that help pull those recommendations together. So, thanks again, Mark, for outlining for council how we make these funds available to the community.
Great. Evening, Mayor, council. Thanks for carving some time out this evening. Keith just gave a very adequate introduction to why I'm here. We receive community development block grant dollars as an entitlement community, and as a part of that, we're required once a year to report how we spent those dollars and the accomplishments from the prior year. So, that's the purpose of my visit. And I've got a short presentation that I think, I know the entire report was in your packet, but the presentation, I think, gives a reasonably cogent synopsis of kind of what the contents of the report consists of. So, I'll go through those slides. This first slide highlights the financial component. You can just kind of read through with me that we received, or we spent a total of 612,442 in the previous year, and our annual allocation last year was only 322,894. So, that's an anomaly that we spent more than we took in, but that's just simply a matter of projects that were kind of backed up. For instance, a large sidewalk project that I'll highlight later was queued up for the previous year, and then just with timing of those sorts of things, it didn't activate until the following year. The previous year, we had a very slow year with our home repair program for COVID reasons principally. This past year, there was kind of a backlog of projects, so we had a banner year in home repair program. So, that's the reason why we spent quite a bit more than we received, but we still have, even with that, we have about a $250,000 carryover going into this year. So, we're not in any way short going into this year. So, the amounts we spent are shown there. I'll just focus on the percentages. We spent 47% on the home repair program. That's pretty typical. We spent a very small amount on a partnership we have with Habitat for Humanity assisting some of their homeowners. We devoted quite a bit of more money than typical in public facility and improvement projects. I'll walk through those three in a minute. And we spent a typical amount, 7% on public services, and then the remainder fall under the administrative category, the amounts, the amount we contribute to the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan to help us as a city comply with fair housing laws, and then the program administration amount, which really goes to, as it sounds like, running the program. In terms of accomplishments, I'm just going to highlight those by program. So, in the housing area, we did have, as I said, a banner year with home repair. We assisted 47 homeowners. The average project cost was 8,388. Our share of that, the CDBG share, was 5,125, so about 61% of the total with the homeowner coming in. Well, the homeowner and/or another partner, you'll see in a second that, well, I'll drop down to the bottom right. HomeCor assisted with 20 of those 47 projects. So, they came alongside the homeowners that were having a hard time with, coming up with their share or for any other reason, and contributed financially to some of those projects. But regardless, whether it was another agency or the homeowner, 39% came from those sources. In that little short table, the table on your left, you can kind of get a sense for the levels of income of the families that we assisted. 15% in that extremely low-income category, 38% in the next category down, and then 47% in the, so those, I'll define those in a minute. Extremely low are those households that earn less than 30% of the area median. Very low income is 30% to 50%, and low income is 50% to 80%. We served a large percentage comparatively to other years of female-headed households and a pretty commonly, or a typical percentage of elderly-headed households. And then you see a little bit of a racial and ethnicity breakdown, not a lot of variance there or diversity. And then on the right, you see the types, or the most common types of repairs that we're engaged with: roofs, windows and doors, sewers and furnaces making up the top four. And then, as I said, we had a strong partnership this past year with HomeCor assisting 21 of those households. And I'll just give one quick story of an individual that was assisted. It was a woman that lives on the east side of Hope's campus, approaching, living in her house for over 60 years, very devoted to her neighborhood, living solely on social security, so pretty limited and pretty meager income. I'm imagining, I don't know for certain, but she was probably in that lowest income category. And her water heater was failing, and that created a crisis for her because she didn't have the resources to pay for that. So, most likely, we paid 90% of that repair. HomeCor might have come in with a good portion of the other 10%, but just a good example of the type of household that's being assisted through this program. Staying with housing for another minute, I mentioned the partnership we have with Lake Shore Habitat for Humanity. We assisted two households last year, and just to give you a sense, you're probably familiar with Vista Green project that's currently in process. I happened to see this afternoon that two of those units, two of those houses got occupancy permits today, so we'll be assisting the remainder of those, at least eight, if not nine, of those homeowners that will be moving into those houses over the course of this year. Moving on to public services, that's HUD language. It's more commonly known as human services or social services. These are the dollars that were allowed to subcontract out in the community to nonprofit partners. So, in this case, we've been partnering for the last two years with Good Samaritan and with Community Action House. And I've just got a number there of the number of persons that were assisted jointly by those two organizations. And those are individuals that are either maintaining housing stability with the support of Good Samaritan or, in the case of Community Action House, through their street outreach program, receiving any number of supportive assistance for individuals that are facing homelessness and, in most cases, unhoused. And then, moving down the line, fair housing services. What I've noted there is just the number of hours of education that they've provided in the last year. 14 hours provided to persons that represented some form of a protected class, and nine hours of education provided to housing professionals. And then, some work was done opening five new investigations in instances in which they felt like there was a credible possibility of housing discrimination. And then, I've got just a slide each on the three different public improvement projects that we assisted with financially. What you see in the middle is a map... What you see in the middle is a map of central, the far south end of Central Avenue, as it crosses over Highway 31 and then extends down to 48th Street. We paid, I think, the lion's share, if not the entire bill, for that section of sidewalk. Because we coordinated with MDOT's work on 31, they did some of the work on the crossing, but we paid for the sidewalk extending to 48th Street. And you probably know that area, it's a lot of commercial and industrial, but you get down to the south end of that, and there's a large number of multifamily housing units there. And there was, up until the building of the sidewalk, not, not a tremendously safe way for those children or families to kind of get into the central city where the parks are, where the schools are. So I feel like that was a very, very good project. And we contributed $110,000 to that. I know you're familiar with this project, the improvements made at Moran Park. CDBG contributed $70,000 towards the purchase of that equipment. I don't know what portion of that was, but I think it was a substantial contribution. And of course, we were very pleased that, that the, the equipment that was installed had features for inclusivity and accessibility for, for children with disabilities or families with disabilities. And then, last but not least, we contributed $20,000 to the Parks Department's tree planting fund. That just was a, an initiative or an area of interest that kind of bubbled up out of the Neighborhood Improvement Committee, just wanting to see more street tree coverage. In particular, our trees, the trees that CDBG funded, were required that they be planted in the lower to moderate income neighborhoods within the city. That's, again, that, that covers kind of the financial portion of the report and the accomplishments. There are a couple of other sections toward the back of the report that just address very briefly how either the city or, or community and neighborhood services interact in some way or another with these sorts of topics. Public housing, addressing barriers to affordable housing, poverty in general, fair housing, lead-based paint. So I can field any questions about any of those, if there are any. And then, finally, it is required that this document go out for public comment, so it was posted in the Sentinel as, as typical. No comments were received up to this date. It is required that we hold a public hearing prior to your vote on this, on this document. I'll just quickly note that the Neighborhood Improvement Committee got a chance to look at it last night, just last night, and they did recommend approval. So my recommendation to you is, should you choose to, to approve the document, so that I can in turn submit it to HUD.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions for staff? Len?
Yeah. A couple of things. Somebody asked about the, not having received any comments about this report yesterday at the Neighborhood Improvement Committee meeting. So I, so, and, and what I, what I neglected to say was that you actually gathered lots of comment, public comment, in actually creating the, the plan. So I wonder if you could just share a little bit about what you do to...
Right. That would have been helpful for me to know last night.
It occurred to me later.
Yep, yep. Yeah. Going into the process of building out a new plan to, to prepare for a new spending year, we do hold at least two, typically, we hold two public sessions at the library or in this room where we invite the public, and those are typically reasonably well-attended. We always invite the nonprofit community because they have an interest, they likely have an interest in how these funds are, are being spent. So yeah, Len's correct that we do have a good amount of public input received. And then the Neighborhood Improvement Committee, as representatives of the city, all residents of the city certainly are providing public, or, you know, feedback certainly on how the program is operating throughout the course of the year, so.
Thank you. And then the other, I wonder if you could talk a little bit more about the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice? What's the timeline on when we'll see that, and if you could just talk a little bit about that process?
Yep. Should be available any day. I got a, a second draft. This is a document that's, I think it's fair to say, it's, it's, it's not a hard and fast requirement, but HUD certainly expects some evidence that the city is proactively furthering the efforts of, of creating a fair housing environment within the city. And one way of doing that, the way most cities would do that, is to find some way to do a study or an analysis of the imped, of the impediments that are experienced in the city. So we did contract that out to McKenna, and the, you folks approved that in January or so of this year, I guess I think you did. I don't know if that went before you or not, but anyway, we, we had the latitude to, to contract that out and use our administrative dollars. So they did a very, more than adequate job. A first draft came in about a month and a half ago. We suggested some revision, so I received a follow-up draft earlier this week or the end of last week. So we're just working on the final. So I think within a week or two, we will have a document that's ready. And yeah, it's a, I think it's a helpful document that just, as the name implies, tells us where people that are, are good at looking at the information are seeing possibilities or evidence of impediments. Not necessarily hard and fast violations, but the, the opening the door for, for less than equitable treatment within the, within the housing market.
Yeah, it seems like to me, and I always, I always think about fair housing as the thread that runs through all of our, any, any efforts at addressing housing issues, that we always have to keep that in mind as we are moving forward. So yeah, appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Corbin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two points. First, a public, a comment about public facilities, but then second, a question on public services. So before that, thank you. It's, it's wonderful to see this information being used, or the money being used, so diverse across a lot of different spectrums. So thank you for that, and the committee and, and working very diligently and making sure that happens. From a public facility perspective, just to comment, that we don't have anything south of 31. And that does create a safety issue for a lot of those children who live in my ward, getting across 31. That's a very dangerous prospect. So hopefully, this council will consider thinking about that in the future. The other thing is, a question regarding public services. So for homelessness, you mentioned that, I think it was $44,000, served 7%, roughly 758 persons, is what you, your, your information was.
Sounds right.
What services specifically are they getting from those dollars? Could you answer that?
So the dollars are more or less 50/50 split, if I'm not mistaken, 20 some for Good Samaritan, and in that case, we're funding an individual, a staff person who's providing supportive services to persons that are at imminent risk of homelessness. We're not, we're not funding any dollars, any housing dollars specifically, but we're funding a staff person who's providing troubleshooting, helping them link with services, with resources, link with other departments within Good Samaritan or other departments at the county level to avert homelessness, if that makes sense.
It does.
And then for the other roughly half of that 40, 44,000 going to Community Action House, similarly, we're funding staffing, not any, yet, we're paying, in that case, 100% staffing costs for a portion of their, their, their street outreach team, which is out in the community, at First United Methodist Church, at the library, in the, in the woods, you know, helping provide just hands-on, tangible assistance to those individuals. So, but all, you know, very focused on moving them forward towards a housing solution. So it's very concrete, things like many of them, some anyway, are lacking documentation that they would need to be able to sign a lease or to obtain employment. So it's, they've got, they've got the resources they, they can tap into to help people get their, their ID or their social security card, and it's, yeah, any number of other sorts of hands-on sorts of assistance, just to provide some dignity to that, that group and move them forward in a, in a, in a direction toward permanent housing.
And so, don't accept this as criticism, but just a, a question, I guess, to further that. It's, it's a, my observation, and I don't think that anyone in this room or throughout the city hasn't noticed lately, there's a homeless population throughout the city, in particular, you know, our public buildings and things of that nature. I know we've tried to address it on several issues, but is, is, can this, these funds be used in any way through these organizations to try and address that a little differently, so we can meet the needs of homelessness right now that we have currently in our city? That particular group of people that we find on the streets, that, is there a way to use these type of dollars in that direction?
Well, I, maybe I might need to hear a little bit more about, in a different, what you mean by in a different way. I mean, they are, their, their ultimate goal for the street outreach team is to assist towards stability. So that's their, that's their goal. The solutions are challenging because of the housing market and because of any number of other factors, so, but yeah, and if there are, and, and they're not completely on their own, they're working as a, as a, as a larger network, along with Good Samaritan and the county and Department of Human Services, or, you know, any of those agencies, Community Mental Health, they're working with all those other partners to try to, you know, proceed with individuals in that direction. So there's certainly openness to doing new things, and so, yeah, but...
Okay.
Those funds are, the funds are flexible, generally speaking. So if there are ways that, if there are different strategies or different tools that we can activate, we can certainly happy, happy to look at that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions for staff? Ms. Ernstors?
I don't have a question, but I just a comment. This is really kind of an amazing department, you know, kind of quietly amazing, because you're not aware of it till we hear of this, and things are happening all the time. And I'm very familiar with helping out with windows and, you know, chimney repair doors or like the woman who couldn't. But I'm really taken with the sidewalk aspect and the collaboration with that, and with the trees. I mean, trees are beautiful, and they're calming, just like water is, and they also mitigate the heat. And I just, I, I really appreciate that in this program, that this is for people who can't run out and buy a tree and, or set up, so I'm just impressed with that. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Great. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We do need to do a public hearing with this. The, the guidelines or the rules for the public hearing are the same as they are for public comment, limited to speaking one time on any particular public hearing, only on the topic of this particular issue, and your time is limited to five minutes. Is there anyone here who would like to address council in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item seven A?
Will we adopt the recommendation?
Moved by Hookstra, is there support?
Support.
Support by Sol, any discussion?
No, I just, I would also like to echo what Nikki said and thank Mark for really exceptional leadership in the, in the department. I'm, I sit on the Neighborhood Improvement Committee, and it's an exceptional group of people who are, who are really dedicated to making neighborhoods safer and to ensure people have what they need in our community. And it's just a, it's just a really, it's just a joy to sit on that committee, and so I just want to thank you, Mark, for your leadership there.
Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Ernstors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item, item seven B, speculative tax abatement. A public hearing for PA 198 speculative tax abatement for Lake Shore Industrial Properties LLC, 766 East 48th Street, Suites 110 and 120. Mr. Van Beek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council and listening public. We have with these speculative tax abatements, you'll recall that this is a relatively new tool that we jumped into two, maybe three years ago. And while it's not the project in front of you tonight, our guest will be able to talk about the success of the first project or the first phase of this, and now he's taking a look at a phase two. So I'm going to ask in a moment, Randy Price will come up and talk really about how this tool has worked. Greg King is also here from Lake Shore Advantage, so if you want reminders about how the speculative tax abatement works, recall that what you do is first, you're approving this phase of a larger building and constructing the building and basically building it out, and then later, a company can come in and get an additional tax abatement as they occupy the facility and put more equipment and maybe other build-out within that structure in place. So again, this is similar to and located adjacent to another very successful project. In this case, it's one building with two different suites right now proposed. The buildings together, the suites together total 96,500 square feet, and at this stage, it's a total $5 million investment. So again, I'm going to ask Randy Price to come up. I'm not sure Randy, developer, owner, just developer, just owner, probably a little bit everything.
All of the above.
All of the above. Well, Randy, why don't you come on, come on up, and again, maybe if you can just give perspective on how this worked with the prior project that went through and the success that, that you've seen and that, quite frankly, council participated in in that second stage, 198, and then talk about this project.
And even though the city man, even though the city manager's already said it, would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
My name is Randall Price, and I am West Olive, Lake Shore.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to take just a second to make a, a personal statement. I've had the opportunity in my business career, in my business life, to attend a lot of meetings, sit on a lot of boards, and I just want to tell you what a pleasure it is to see the tradition of prayer and pledge of allegiance continued here at Holland in this meeting, and hope that never changes. This is refreshing and really nice to see. So it's part of why we have been Holland residents now for over 30 years. So congratulations to all of you, and I hope that continues. This program, 198, has been very successful for us and for the community. Hopefully, you've had a chance to maybe see our building on Waverly Road that we've created. I have a photograph here on my iPad, if anybody would like to look at it, welcome to. I could pass it around if you'd like. But we're very proud of the building. We've had a tremendous response from both the design and the appeal and so forth. We're real proud to, to make that a part of the Holland community. It's been extremely successful. It is now 100% leased, long-term lease. Our tenant is, without giving away too much of their thunder, we expect upwards of 100 new jobs to be created in, as a result of this facility. So extremely successful program. Having the park 198 available to them was integral into their decision of locating there and, and taking that leased space. It was very important to them and to us, just as phase two will be. It is under construction now. It is 96,500 square foot building right adjacent to this on 48th Avenue around the corner. You'll see in this week, 15 semis load of steel coming into that building, and you will see us start going vertical next week on the construction of that project. So we're extremely grateful to you, to the city, to the program for supporting us, and we look forward to the next building having the same opportunity, because it is very important to a new tenant trying to come into the Holland market to receive this kind of a benefit. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? I, since Nora, I just have a, I have a comment. I want, I wanted to thank you for, for making the investment in the community, recognize that there's a significant amount of risk in building a 96,000 square foot building without a tenant ready to move into that, and glad that we are able as city council to be supportive of business in this community, to make it as attractive as possible for you to invest in this community, because that's what we need for the long-term success of Holland.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
My wife would tell you that I might be crazy for doing this, but...
Well, it worked the first time.
It's all worked out. It's all worked out.
All right. Any, any other questions or comments for the applicant? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
We do also need to do a public hearing on this one. I've explained what we do with the public hearings twice already, so I'm not going to do it this time. Is there anyone here who would like to address council in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item seven B? Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Ernstors, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Sol?
Yes.
Ernstors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item, item seven C, downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment. Adopt a resolution of necessity for the annual downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment, and adopt a resolution scheduling a hearing on final assessment for October 4, 2023. That's a mouthful. for October 4, 2023. That's a mouthful, Mr. Van Beek.
Yes, and thank you, Mayor and counsel. You know, some people say it's fall, so that means it's football season. You all know that it's fall and it means it's the time to go through multiple, multiple steps to take a look at all of these various downtown assessments. And, and we've already been through a couple steps of getting to this night. Uh, this night, obviously there's three different ones in front of you. And if I could, Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to kind of, kind of set the stage for all three of them and then kind of go from there. And it's first for parking operations and maintenance. And next it would be for snow melt, snow melt operations and maintenance. And then finally, it's for the principal shopping district assessment. Um, just a few things that I'd like to say kind of in global context before that, and then I'll recognize our staff to, um, certainly answer any questions. And they may or may not want to say anything else as you consider each one. But, um, periodically I think you get questions. I certainly get questions of a perspective that's an understandable perspective, I think, of citizens that they think, oh, wow, there's a lot more city activity that happens downtown and you see staff down there doing different things. And it's like, um, is that a good investment of my city tax dollars to do that? And while there are some tax dollars that go downtown for police coverage and those types of things, just a reminder that these are three instances tonight where basically you have those entities, business and, um, in some cases citizens, that are living downtown and, and, um, are paying the extra cost for the operations that happen in that downtown. And it's, I always just like at this time of the year, um, to just remind people that actually this is, in many cases, assessing themselves for the services that they get for our downtown. Um, we also have, and she's not going to like me for this, but for these first two, Amy Sasamoto, this is her last time around with this, but we're going to invite her back, you know, every year after to make public comment as we go through these. But, um, I think it's as good a time as any to really recognize Amy for some tremendous service. Um, just the way that she is gracious to everyone that she, um, involves herself with, um, provides great services in some complex and some complicated and some sometimes, you know, not so fun things that you get to deal with, right, Amy? But we really appreciate you and what you've done for the city. So thank you very much. And you can kick me in the shins next time you see me for doing that, but I'll, I'll take it. It's okay. Um, so with all that context for all three, the one before you tonight, um, in this first item is the downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment. You know, maybe in short, the thing is downtown parking is free, but it's not free, right? Um, and here what you see is a representation of the costs that go into, um, in some cases, renting lots, definitely taking care of those lots, doing s- snowplow operations in those lots, um, handling, um, the processes of buying parking permits if you happen to live downtown in some cases. Um, so just a tremendous, um, operation here. Again, very much involved with the DDA and particularly the Downtown Parking Board. And in this case, um, all of the assessment information, and then I think it's covered also that this represents a 3% increase from last year. And I think we've really locked into that of instead of going multiple years, not increasing and then like, oh, we got to catch up and doing a larger increase. I think they've done a great job of, um, in these cases, just taking a look at doing a marginal increase each year to make sure that we're keeping up with costs. So with that, I'm going to turn and see if Amy shakes her head at me one way or the other. If there's anything else that she'd like to cover from a staff perspective, otherwise if you have questions, she's probably going to have to answer them for you.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right. Great. Uh, this also requires a public hearing. Uh, and so now I will open the public hearing on, we're going to do these individually. I will do the public hearing on item seven for downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment. Is there anyone here who would like to address counsel in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the public, uh, what is the public's, what is counsel's? Yeah. What would counsel like to do with item seven C?
Move to approve downtown, the, um, downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment.
Moved by Soul, is there support? Support by Vreeman, any discussion?
Your honor?
Yes, Mr. Hookstra.
A bit of a point of order is the resolution or the recommendation we're voting on, is it to set a public hearing or is it to approve the, uh, assessment?
That's a very good question. I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Van Beek.
So it's that multiple step process. So what this does is it adopts a resolution of necessity that basically says this is needed. And then additionally, it schedules a hearing for the final assessment in October, which then you get to have the opportunity to go through this again and have another public hearing. So the recommendation is as outlined, I think the motion was fine of just, um, proceeding with the downtown parking operations, maintenance assessment is outlined in the recommendation.
I just want to make clear that this is, we're not finished with the process yet.
No, multiple steps.
Mr. Van Beek has so nicely explained.
Thanks, Dave.
Any other, any other discussion at this point? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Ernstors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Soul?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Uh, next item, item seven D, downtown snow melt operations and maintenance assessment. Adopt a resolution of necessity for the annual downtown snow melt operations and maintenance assessment and adopt a resolution scheduling a hearing on the final assessment for October 4, 2023 and accept revisions to the downtown snow melt operation and maintenance policy. Mr. Van Beek, anything that you'd like to add in regard to this one?
Um, I won't do the whole speech again. I'm sure you're all thankful for that, but the same applies in that Amy is critical to this operation and also specifically call out Brian White, who is her partner in all of this. Hi, Brian, back there in the corner. And as you all know, um, we're extremely excited, although it involved a lot of work where we're, um, looking at, um, completing some serious construction and some expansion of our snow melt and adding, um, not only Sixth Street, um, both sides of the road, um, but then also a portion of Sixth Street in the road, but then also improved connections down Columbia to Freedom Village and also down College Avenue. So, um, that doesn't just happen as you might suspect. And the crunching of all those numbers and everything gets a little more complex also. But as usual, staff does a great job with this, uh, makes sure that when we have changes, reaches out, has meetings with the property owners, explains what's going on, the benefits behind it, why we do it, the way we do it. So, um, again, you have this recommendation in front of you to, um, move forward with describing, um, um, declaring necessity. Um, and then you get to hear about it again in October.
Great. Thank you. Questions for staff? Mr. Vreeman?
Uh, just a clarification, Amy, I wonder if you can clarify just publicly, um, is when the Sixth Street project is completed, will those properties also be assessed going forward?
They're in this assessment. We added 89,000 square feet of snow melt in the Sixth Street project. And that is included in the assessment because that is, the snow melt will be up and working for the melting season.
Yep. Way to go.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, uh, we now will open a public hearing in regard to this item, item seven D. Is there any member of the public who would like to address counsel in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to this item?
Move to approve the maintenance assessment for the coming agenda.
All right.
However it was presented, a lot of words.
Thank you. Moved by Vreeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Soul, any discussion?
I just want to say, I just want to say that in Holland, we don't call it winter anymore. We call it the melting season. That's so great.
That's great. Mr. Hookstra?
Yeah, this might be maybe more appropriate on October 4, but, uh, there's no guarantee I'll remember. So I just want to say it now. Uh, I don't remember how many years ago, four, five, that we ran snow melt down Central to Evergreen Commons, maybe more.
Seven now.
That long. Oh geez. How time flies. Anyway, I live on Central and, uh, unfortunately the snow melt's on the other side of the street. But I do have a pretty good vantage point of, uh, what happens on Central. And, uh, Central is naturally sort of a, a major thoroughfare from the south side of town to downtown. But since that snow melt's gone on or been installed in the wintertime, we've referred to it as a linear park in the past and it truly is that. Uh, folks are walking up and down that all of the time. I've seen people drive their cars, park them across the street, get their dogs out, get on the sidewalk and walk downtown. And later I see them, I do do other things besides look at my window. I just happened to notice they come back, get back in their car and they go off to who knows where. Uh, but it truly is, uh, a transformational, um, endeavor. And I know we had a lot of discussion and stuff, uh, at the inception of this and at the point of deciding whether to do it or not, but it has turned out to be an amazing resource for this community. Not only frees the path from downtown to Evergreen Commons, uh, which for a lot of folks is a great benefit, um, for that demographic, but for the neighborhood as well. It's, uh, it's sort of an open pathway to the rest of the world, if you will. So, uh, kudos to whoever was involved in making that decision. Um, but just to emphasize the, it isn't just a novelty. It really is, uh, an element that affects the quality of life here in Holland. So I just want to make that point.
Great. Any other discussion from counsel on the motion? I just have a couple of comments because Amy, I, I know that this is the last item for you. I figured you'd probably stick around for the next one as well, but not sure. Um, thank you also from counsel. Um, you, you do a spectacular job with downtown. And as the city manager pointed out, um, those great amenities downtown that we have are not free. Um, we have visitors come into town who are very excited to find out that they don't have to pay for parking downtown. We also have local, locals that, uh, are, have consternation when they go other places and find out that they do have to pay to park, uh, downtown. Um, and it's, it's wonderful that our downtown merchants and our downtown residents are willing to make that investment in the community, not only for their own success, but for the community's success as well. Uh, and you've been, done a fabulous job of coordinating that. Um, and the other has to do with, with snow melt in the downtown area as well. What a great benefit there is. And the same as, as free parking isn't free, somebody has to pay for it. Snow melt's not free either. And people, there's somebody that's got to pay for that. Um, and it's great that the downtown merchants are, are paying for that as well. Uh, and as a, and as a, just a point of clarification, my own mother lives on Sixth Street and she's going to be getting snow melt extended on the sidewalk past her condo. And as I recall from several months ago, we had the list of the, the new people that were going to be added to the roll and I saw my own mother's name there. So mom, I'm sorry. I'm assessing, I'm, I'm, actually I'm setting a hearing of necessity to assess you with additional taxes at some point in the future. Uh, great. So any other, any other discussion or comments from counsel? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Soul?
Yes.
Ernstors?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Uh, and then the last of our public hearings for today, downtown principal shopping district assessment. Adopt a resolution of necessity for the annual principal shopping district assessment and adopt a resolution scheduling a hearing on the final assessment for October 4, 2023. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. So similarly, our principal shopping district assessment allows for support of all the fantastic things, um, that promote downtown and the events that happen downtown. And because I probably don't want to be in trouble with both of our fantastic employees, I'll just say that Kara is fantastic also, but I'll say it shorter. So I'm not in trouble and also she's not allowed to go anywhere. So she's got to stay for a long time. Okay. Good. Good. Um, but again, just, um, wonderful example of, again, our merchants choosing and going through a process and having conversations and representatives and taking a look at this budget and say, yes. Um, in this case, no increase, uh, because they believe that they can continue to provide the services that they have with last year's assessment. Um, but again, this is before you and I'm sure that Kara would do much better job of answering any questions if you have any, but she'd probably be happy to, to, uh, stay back there also. So, um, that's what's before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, we require a public hearing on this as well. Uh, and I'm going to open one more public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address counsel in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to item seven E?
Move to approve the principal shopping district assessment as prepared, as prepared and laid out for us.
Great. Uh, moved by Vreeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Soul, any discussion? And Keith beat me to it, but Kara, we, we appreciate you as well. Rarely, you guys have made a great team over the years. Rarely do I mention one of your names without mentioning the other. Uh, and it's also, I think, great for the public to understand how those great events are paid for in the downtown area and the promotion that's done there, um, that that's coming from a special assessment that's done on the, and paid for by the downtown merchants to promote that downtown in a way that benefits all of us. And I, I don't think there's a whole lot of argument from anybody about how fantastic our downtown is and how successful, uh, the two of you have been working together, uh, to ensure that success in the future. So thank you for that. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Corbin? Soul?
Yes.
Ernstors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, written petitions and communications. Uh, in addition to providing the opportunity for the public to come and speak to us in person at our council meetings, we do also provide an email address where you can send us emails. All council members will get those. We review those in between our regular meetings and then we accept them into the record at the regular meetings. We don't read them out loud at the meetings, but council members do read them and accept them into the record. Uh, we don't have any this evening, but I always like to mention it because I want to make sure people know that that email address is out there. Uh, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Once again, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Uh, next item on the agenda, item 12B1, text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, the Udo, round nine, first reading with final adoption, October 4 of 2023. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. I know, I think we kind of said, hey, round eight was it. And we, we thought it was, but I, I think again, this is an example of using the document and then finding places where we can improve the document. So maybe we should call it something other than round nine and just like ongoing improvement sessions. But Steve Peterson is going to come up and talk to you about a couple things that they found, um, that, um, after going through planning commission and recommending, uh, from planning staff and planning commission, some recommendations for, um, improvements.
Just a question before, Mr. Mayor.
Certainly.
Someone has their mic on and we're ringing.
Well, you're asking for whatever it was worked. So thank you, Mr. Vreeman. Steve, how are you this evening?
Good. Thank you. Thank you. It must be Udo ringing in your ears or something, right? Yeah. Yeah. So yes, we just, very short, very quick tonight. Keith is right. You know, we kind of told you Udo eight was going to be it. I, I too kind of describe these changes as being maybe a little bit more of the normal process that we would go through with, with kind of text amendment. So, uh, this first one that you see here is some changes to the sign ordinance. This is really being generated, uh, really because of sort of Washington Square, South Shore Village wanting to take advantage of, of having some banners. Um, and so this text amendment is simply adding some language, um, into the section where we talk about, uh, signs that don't need permits. Um, and so, uh, that is getting introduced there. And then on the right-hand side, you see a section being added, um, in the commercial industrial areas where, where these types of, um, banners would be allowed. And then sort of because we reference it in that text amendment you saw, uh, where we talk about the banner policy, we're showing you the banner policy. This is not in Udo, so you will, um, consider this really separately. There is an exist-
There is an existing old uh banner policy that's out there, so this would simply be a replacement. Um and I believe Tricia and I think either Vince or Derek have been working quite closely and have come up with this new language um so that you'll just be asked to um adopt this new banner policy. And we just wanted to bring it with the Udo amendment since we're referring to it in the text of those changes. If that makes sense. These next ones are in the Form-based code. So in both the commercial building and the mixed-use building types in the Form-based code, we have a requirement um about um what we call visible light transmission. So how clear the glass is intended to be on the on the first floor. Um so kind of as you're walking along the street, you know, the intention was that that the glass would be quite clear. Um the last project that we had downtown, the Lake Shore Advantage Building, they were not able to meet the Udo requirement of this eighty percent light transmission requirement and the energy code. So uh and what we found was the Lake Shore Building, the Tulip Hotel and the Home Realty Building were all below that eighty percent. Um and while you can get a waiver for light transmission and so that would continue, uh but we thought because these two ordinances are really bumping heads with one another, that it might make a lot of sense to just drop that requirement down um to seventy percent um in hopes that you'd be able to meet both the building, the energy code and this um and the Udo requirement for the light transmission.
Do you have that great graphic that you used at planning commission? You don't have all?
I'm sorry.
That's a great, great window tinting graphic that that showed us exactly what the amount of light transmission looked like.
I'll I'll bring that for the meeting on the fourth.
Thank you, that'd be great.
Um and then finally, um this is the design review board, so sort of the makeup of all of our boards and committees that are in Udo. Uh there's sort of some text in there that talks about the makeup of them. Um and this simply needs to be corrected, so Udo isn't changing the makeup of the board. The makeup of the board or we we simply need to correct how the makeup of the board is indicated in Udo. So I guess I just want to make sure you understand that we're not asking for the makeup to change. It just needs the text in Udo, needs to reflect how the makeup actually is. Um and you can see all the other boards and committees sort of have that the the makeup in that text language. So that is it for whatever we're calling this round um of Udo changes. Um so we're just hoping that you would put it on the agenda for the fourth uh for uh adoption.
All right. Questions for staff? Mr. Corbin?
So you mentioned three buildings that are looking, they could apply for a waiver, but instead we make modifications to Udo to to accomplish what we need to to do for those buildings. Is that pretty typical practice within your department and through the planning commission back to council?
So I I I would describe that as a typical process. Um I would probably liken it a little bit to maybe what you normally hear when uh if you have sort of repeated variances uh that it's quite common to then take a look at your ordinance and see if maybe you need to make an adjustment if you're just simply granting the same sort of variance. And also probably important to re- to remember, the waivers that we do allow for, I mentioned that you can get a waiver for this, but the number of waivers is limited too, so in a sense, if you had a project like this, you'd always be burning one waiver on the same request. So long answer to say, I think it is a very uh normal process to make an adjustment to your ordinance if you're simply doing the same thing over and over again.
So when you, when it's brought to your attention, you you it's usually brought to your attention by either the builder, the contractor, the owner of the property would bring that to your attention, correct?
Correct.
And you guys would give that consideration and then bring it before the planning commission then end up here?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Great. I think that's it. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Steve, could you stick around?
Sure.
Okay. Um now, I after after this is done, I think Mr. Corbin has some questions for you after the meeting.
Okay.
Um well, and we'll try not to be too long for you.
Okay.
Great. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item twelve B one, the text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance?
Move to approve text amendments to Unified Development Ordinance, Udo round nine.
Move by Sol, is there support?
Support.
Support by, is that you, that was Nikki, Arnsors. Uh any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Freeman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item twelve E six point one, gifts. Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gift, Parks and Recreation, Degraff Nature Center, New Habitat Display, Yang Feng, two thousand dollars. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation credited to the appropriate account and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the gifts?
Move to approve accept the gifts with a token of our appreciation.
Move by Sol, is there support? Support by Freeman, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh item thirteen, communications from the city manager. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I saw you look at the clock there, mayor, so yeah, so I know that means I have a certain amount of time. Um just a few really quick things and really just heads up for what to expect in the coming month or so. Um one, I apologize in advance, but um I have a couple. It it's that season. I guess it's not only football season and almost and almost snow melting season, but it's also event season, so there's a lot of events in the community. Thanks for a lot of you attending some of those. We um had the Community Foundation here recently. I think tomorrow night I'm I'm because Outdoor Discovery Center is such a great partner, I'm going to their event. We have La Oup coming up um here soon. Um but I'm also going to be out of town a couple of the Wednesdays. I serve on the Michigan Municipal League Board. Um just recently, I was appointed to the MERS Board that handles our pension investments. Um and that's going to preclude me from being with you next week, hold your applause. Um and then uh we also have, so a couple of times that I'm not going to be with you here in the coming months. We were thinking perhaps that next week our study session, we would cancel. However, um not finalized yet, we are thinking and I think you should expect that we will have that study session. Um I think I mentioned to you, but it's kind of been out there also. Um while you all and I think twenty twenty-three of our local units in Ottawa County all um approved in agreement with Ottawa County proposed to bring to Ottawa County for early voting centers. Um there has been some um late movement and consideration of possibly um wanting to make some changes to that. We are still waiting for and um looking to see if and what proposed amendments are in there. Huge amount of thanks to Ottawa County Clerk Justin Robuck, but also our clerk staff, Kathy Grimm and Brenda, who have um really been doing an amazing amount of work behind the scenes, talking through um opportunities and challenges with that. Um I think at this point, you can expect that either way, we'll want to have a study session with you all next week and either outline um what perhaps are options before us to um go with the county or um we've been working on kind of plan B, C, and D at right now, right Kathy? So um we will have for you, no matter what, um a recommendation next week, Wednesday night. Um and we really feel like it's appropriate for a study session um because the following week in your first meeting in October, we need, we need you to take action because we need to give indication back to the state, the Secretary of State um as to what our plans are to implement an early voting center option, um which of course um was um implemented because of a statewide vote um last year. So more details to come. Um again, we'll go through that um with you um supposedly next week, Wednesday night. And we will have a recommendation for you at that and um Kathy and Brenda um will lay out um why we're going to recommend what we do. Still wait to be seen. If I would tell you if I knew right now, but we're we're still waiting. I think that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um I've just got a couple of things. One, uh want to uh show appreciation to the Holland VFW. On Saturday morning, there was a group of about twenty-five or thirty folks uh that went out on a walk, for a five K walk to raise money. It's called the Blue Tears Walk uh to try for uh veteran suicide prevention. Uh and that group of folks raised over six thousand dollars, uh including one of the members raised two thousand dollars all by themselves. Uh that money then ends up going to Battle Creek, to the VA Hospital to help uh with veterans' mental health and suicide prevention. Uh so kudos to them on a on a great effort. It's, I did that walk last year as well and there were about ten people. This year, there were about thirty people and so we're expecting that to continue to grow. Uh we had breakfast afterwards and wow, they can cook at the VFW. That was one of the best breakfasts I have had in a long time. Uh also, uh here in these this chamber, uh on Monday night, uh there was a candidate forum put on by the League of Women Voters that is available on the city's YouTube channel. Uh and then also for uh voters next Monday night uh from six to seven thirty in these chambers, will be another League of Women Voters uh candidate forum with an opportunity to hear from those folks that are running for city council. Uh nothing more important than being a good and informed voter, so make sure that you take the opportunity uh to be able to either, if you can't be here, to watch those as well. Uh and then I also have one mayoral appointment, reappointment uh and resignation, uh and that is I'm recommending to the Holland City Council that you approve the appointments of Amy Alderink to the Historic District Commission with a term to expire June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Uh the appointment of Nick Chadwell as the PSD, the Principal Shopping District Representative to the Holland Civic Center Place Board with a term to expire on June thirty, twenty twenty-six. And the reappointment of Robert O'Malley to the International Relations Commission with a term expiring June thirty, twenty twenty-six. And also to accept the resignation of Steve Farrell from the Holland Civic Center Place Board effective April nineteen of twenty twenty-three. And I would be looking for a motion in that regard.
Move to approve those recommendations.
Move by Freeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Sol, any discussion?
Yeah, I I find it amazing that Amy Alderink has not been on the Historic District Commission ever before. So I'm so glad that she is going to be a, she's she's part of the home of home corps. She and just really glad to have her taking Nick Rolinski's place, who will also be a great loss to that to that committee.
I I share that same thing and I'm I'm I can't be a hundred percent sure that she wasn't on at some point and term limited and then had the appropriate time away and then is back again. But Amy is one of those great public servants who has been all over this community uh and helping in the city for for literally decades. Um and we we appreciate her and all of those folks who step up uh and to help run the city because we we rely uh on citizens to come to come forward and help us govern. City council cannot do all of this alone. We've got lots of boards and committees and commissions. And I am going to make one other little statement. Is it okay if I I mention that the video? Because I posted it today, even though I think I might have posted it early. Uh city, city produce and it's it relates to this, so I think it's a it's appropriate. This the city produced a wonderful, our great media team produced a video on what you can do and how you can serve on a board, committee, or commission uh with great uh great parts played by members of our boards, committees, and commissions. Uh so it was great to see all of those folks on that video. You can see it on the City of Holland's YouTube channel. I posted it on my social media today. I'm sure it's going to get show up on city's social media very quickly. Uh and um and you can also, if you're interested in serving on a board, committee, or commission, all you need to do is go to serve dot cityofholland.com. Very simple website, serve dot cityofholland.com. Um any other discussion on the motion before us? Seeing none, uh Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Sol?
Yes.
Arnsors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Corbin? Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Uh appointments, motions, communications from council members? Mr. Cor- Mr. Corbin?
It's more of a question, I'm not even sure if it's from a procedure, if it's appropriate, but um question on process. And the reason I asked you to stick around is because maybe you could help us, help me understand process a little better, maybe a few of my colleagues here. With regard to the Holland Civic Center Place Board, there's been a question out there regarding the signage of the facility. Um appearing tonight, there's a waiver process. There's an ability of men Udo. I know it's been brought to the attention of the city on multiple occasions, creating very rigorous debates on this on this um around the dais here. So I guess the the question to me, to staff, and if they want to bring other staff into the into the response, that's up to them, but because now they're available. And we can all hear alike uh across the dais, right? What is that process look like regarding a particular waiver and or changing the Udo ordinance to reflect the possibility of a sign that is desired by the Civic Center Place Board out in front of the Civic Center Place Facility?
Thank you, and I will take the first shot at this and then I will quickly look and then Steve and and Vince will do a better job of what Keith meant to say was this. So first, um anyone has the ability to file and request. I think in this case, it wouldn't be a waiver, it would actually go to the, I always call it the zoning board of appeals, but it's just the board of appeals. Um I think as discussed, but just to kind of wrap things up and 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 repeat same things and then these guys can catch me. The challenge that I that I said in a study session that I will reiterate here is when you go to the board of appeals, um it's not a process whereby it's like, well, I have a good logical argument, so you should let me do something. Um it's really um very based on, do you meet um established criteria to either get um and I'm not going to call it a waiver. You don't get a waiver at the board of appeals. You get uh action granting you an appeal, which is not similar to what we've just gone through and described with the process with the buildings. So that's the first thing to say of an opportunity that you have to go before the board of appeals as it relates to this.
So so what you're saying on the three properties that were in question that we approved under the Udo to allow them to go forward, what you're saying, they went through the board of appeals process?
No, that would fall under a different section, I believe. Is that correct?
Correct. So Udo is very specific about the type of waivers you can get and Keith is absolutely right. There's a big difference between a waiver and a zoning variance, right? Um so Udo was very specific about where we kind of built in some of that flexibility that um light transmission was one of those areas that are eligible for a waiver. Um and so those other buildings have been able to to do the waiver process, but any other sort of exception would really require the zoning variance, which as Keith has pointed out, have very specific criteria in order to to grant those.
Well, I'm not, I don't know the exact type of signage, but they are talking about. What I've heard is to be an LED or a light reflective type of sign.
Yeah, so that'd be a different.
So they're not falling into that section, right?
Correct. So it'd be a different process that's very clearly stated out, set out that what we dealt with earlier and what you're asking about with the buildings um would have to be dealt with differently and would have to um it, you can't grade a waiver. You'd have to go to the board of appeals to get an appeal granted or denied. So that would be one step and that's not the only step, right?
Follow up to that when you get a chance, but go ahead.
Yeah, so then this, well, why don't we just handle that if you've got a follow-up to that? I I can describe the other process.
The other two might give clarity, so go ahead.
Okay, so the other process would be you could go back in um and at this point, I would just say it's been discussed, but there hasn't been any direction to go in and do this, so we haven't pursued it. Although I will say that we've all talked about it, right? And really, to go back in, um and the way you'd go back in is is either the planning commission would pick it up or city council would ask by a vote in a direction to pick it up. But I think it's fair to say, and then I'm going to again lean lean on Steve and Vince. But I think it's fair to say, and then I'm going to again lean, lean on Steve and Vince. What you have in here, and again, I talked about this in study session, is you have something known colloquially and colloquially in the business as being spot zoning, right? So really what you're taking a look at is if you'd want to change the rules, really then you'd, you'd really, I think, be looking at, um, either pulling out that entire section of being in the downtown, which I think has of, had, it could be discussed, but has problems associated with that. Or you're taking a look at, you'd have to change it for everything downtown. So really then you'd be looking at if you'd want to allow or not a specific type of sign. Um, it'd be allowed everywhere downtown.
So just to clarify, spot zoning is a particular piece of parcel, correct? But if it's multiple parcels or multiple, multiple parcels in an area, it wouldn't be considered, it would not be considered spot zoning, correct?
Um, I, I, Steve, why don't you take that one?
I'll try. So, yeah, I think maybe we're using the term spot zoning a little bit more general here. I, I, I guess, I think what Keith is referring to is if it was written in such a way that the only, uh, property that would apply to would be the Civic Center, would effectively be, you know, sort of in the spirit of maybe what we think about in terms of spot zoning, but, um, you know, the sign ordinance, I guess, could be drafted in a way that would only apply to one piece of property. I certainly, in terms of process, um, would expect that, you know, something like that would probably be something we would hear from, you know, uh, a recommendation from the DDA to the Planning Commission to, to bring to you then a, a, a recommendation of how those groups feel about those types of changes. I, I guess to me that would sort of be the normal process or who we would lean on to get some guidance on, on changes for something like that.
I certainly would agree that we would expect that, but we haven't heard that. So that's why I'm asking the question, but thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't want to step out too far, but I will say that, um, this discussion going back sometime was something that the DDA did take a look at, and there was, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong. I think there was very, very strong feeling from the DDA of wanting to keep what we've had historically in place in the downtown and to not have the electric signs. And we've dealt with it on other edges or in downtown. I'm thinking of the Fields Fabric Property or others. So I think the DDA could be asked this question again, and I'm not trying to short circuit that, but I, I would not expect a different answer from the DDA group.
So let me ask one more question because you're on spot zoning. If one were to say from River Street to, um, the, the backside of the Civic Center, that, that area was an overlay of, let's say, an entertainment district of some sort, would that be spot zoning or would that be applicable?
So I think the difficulty that you have there is it's pretty hard to say, well, that's an entertainment district when you take a look at the rest of downtown and somehow say that that's not an entertainment district.
Whatever it would be, I mean, there might be a variety of names that could be used there. What I'm saying is couldn't there be an overlay that would permit it, that would include multiple properties that would have the option to do that as well, and then it wouldn't be spot zoning?
I'm going to let Steve answer that, but part of the difficulty is you don't have multiple properties there. You have one property.
Yeah, and I guess I think the short-term answer is yes, I think it's certainly possible. You certainly have to, to weigh whether or not you want to do that too and have something applied to only, you know, a piece of property that the city controls too. So I, I guess all of that, you know, to me kind of plays into whether you should, even if you can.
Okay, thank you. And you had another point or?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was able to ask those questions.
You bet, absolutely.
We had some staff that could help us kind of walk through that as a board and get some clarity. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hookstra?
Oh, thank you.
You're very welcome, sir. I, I thought you might have something you'd like to add.
Yeah, a couple of weeks, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, this was a kind of loosely brought, I loosely spoke to it. Uh, and, um, inadvisably used the term carve-out, which you corrected me on, and I'm grateful for that. Uh, I did a little bit of research on this and spoke to my resident planning expert, uh, who's my brother. And talked to him, asked his opinion on this. And apparently the, the term used to describe the thing you want to avoid are things that are arbitrary or capricious. Is that right? That sounds, that sounds right. It's planner language, right? In other words, you don't want to enter into stuff that, um, is very specific or like, oh, let's, uh, let's provide a sign for the Civic Center, but nobody else. Uh, that would be considered, I think, arbitrary and capricious. But I think the intent, if I have this, if I'm understanding this correctly, the intent of, uh, zoning law or changes that might occur is for that to apply to a broader spectrum, for a broader group, uh, so as to, um, introduce equity in, um, the approach and application of zoning laws. So if, and I don't know if this would stick well enough, but rather than pointing out or identifying one location, if we, if it was written such to say, well, a certain group or type of business, like, uh, entertainment or, or performing arts venues, or however you would word it, something that would create a wider, a wider group focus of activity, if I'm describing that correctly, you tell me if I'm right or wrong here, um, would be a, a way to approach that. And an overlay, I, from what I was told is a possible way to do that, but, um, seems like that might be more work than is actually necessary. So, uh, that's the word I got and the limited point of understanding that I have of it. But, um, it's complicated, I'm understanding, and tricky, but possible, I think. Does that sound right?
Yeah, and Steve will correct me, because we've had some of these discussions, right? Cause it came up and, and it's not a new conversation either. Um, Dave, what you described, I think, is a direction that we could investigate. Right now, we're kind of in this area, because we haven't been asked and no one's directed to investigate. I would say there's a good chance just for everyone to kind of, and this isn't like done or, or like, but like envision in that approach, Dave, I think what you would, and I don't mean to call out certain businesses or anything, but I think it's applicable. You would basically look at like Sperry's. Civic Center, Sperry's, Park Theater, and the Knickerbocker are the ones that immediately come to mind that probably would be like, okay, if you'd make that change, you'd kind of be embracing an approach that said, all of those entities or any other that come, come like it would have digital signage available to them. And I'm not passing a judgment on that. I'm just saying, to some extent, that's kind of, that may be kind of the evaluation that you're making.
Yeah, if I can continue a little bit, I totally understand where the downtown, uh, folks are thinking. You don't want to have like a Las Vegas situation where everybody's got an electronic digital sign. Uh, that would probably be too distracting and inappropriate, but, um, well, I'm getting into editorial space here, so I'll stop there, but.
Ms. Sol?
I had something, but I was answered when, um, Keith gave his, uh, statement, so I'm good. Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Any other motions, appointments, communications from council members?
Just one thing, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to ask the question, and thank you for sticking around. Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
All right, next item, item sixteen, first reading of ordinances. Uh, section thirty-nine dash three point zero eight, building type standards. Mr. Van Beek, do we, we, we need to vote on this? This is just, I, I know this is part of that, part of parliamentary procedure.
Process. I think it just stands here. You already took action earlier to put it under first reading. Um, so I do not believe, Vince, that you actually have to take action at this point.
Anything we need to do, Mr. Duckworth, that we haven't already done?
No, I think you're, you're, you're satisfied by this first reading. It's introduced. Uh, the charter requires, uh, at least two weeks before it can be finally adopted. So that's, that's this process, and you, you've done that by accepting it for first reading.
All right, and that's why we have them set for October four. All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Hookstra. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Freeman and Sol. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you all.